Call this meeting to order. John, would you lead us in the plates, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, or my nation and my land, and to this world, where every justice is.
Thank you. Ann, would you call the roll, please?
This is Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Here.
Ms. Genesi Zerker.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Mayor Lecliter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Here.
Great, thank you very much. And thanks to everyone for your patience as we start a little late this evening. Beginning this evening, we have a quarterly update from Scott Dring, our executive director, and I don't know if you have anybody accompanying you this evening?
Yeah, Troy got called away unexpectedly to Cleveland, so he won't be here, but he'll be here next time.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I'll be brief. I know I took some of your time last week talking about President's Cup, but I did want to give you a quick update on the tourist ministry here in Dublin. The industry continues to improve this year. So far this year, bed tax revenues are up nine percent versus last year. We continue that. We will continue to see that growth throughout the end of this year. We're also expecting an increase to four to six percent increase in bed tax revenues for next year as well. But you know, also, I've said many times, a percentage is often doesn't tell the whole story. We still have not reached the levels of revenue that we experienced in 2007, 2008. Although we are attracting more visitors than we did back then, people are paying less for their hotel rooms than they did at that period of time. For example, in 2007, 2008, an average hotel room in the city of Dublin was $102. That same room this year is $92. So, and that's a trend that we're seeing nationwide, not just here in Dublin. So, the good news is there's more people here in Dublin. They're spending more money in our restaurants, attractions, shops, et cetera. They're just paying less for our hotel rooms. We presented to our board last month our marketing plan for the upcoming year, which is in your packet. We have a lot planned for the upcoming years. You can see we have really five key objectives in our marketing plan, hundreds of tactics to get those objectives accomplished. And again, you know, we're very accountable for everything we do. You will see that each tactic we have does have a measurable to it as well. You know, there really are two major things. If you can kind of boil it down to objectives that we do for our overall efforts. One is obviously promote and market and sell Dublin as a great destination across the country. We do that through a mirror, a multifaceted marketing program using our social media, print advertising campaigns, our brand, and so forth. The other key component we do is we work very hard to attract new events and their economic impact that they bring to the city of Dublin. And I do have a couple of quick updates on some potential new events that are coming here to the city. We are still in the running to secure the Football University Top Gun event. I know we've talked about this in the past. This is an event that attracts the top middle school and high school football players from across the country. It would generate almost 5,000 room nights in our town for next July. To kind of put that in relation to what that exactly means, the Memorial Tournament this year generated 4,300 room nights. So, this event for that one year would be larger than the Memorial Tournament in terms of its economic impact, the number of people staying in our hotels for that week-long period. We're working closely with city staff and Dublin City Schools. The event would be held at Dublin Jerome High School again in July. The good news is we've made the final cut. They will be coming here September 21st for a final site visit to visit Dublin. We'll be showing them around town and again, and putting our best foot forward. We do know the other two finalists are Williamsburg, Virginia, and Las Vegas, Nevada. So, it's down to the three of us. So, we appreciate all your support in trying to land that. The incumbent is Williamsburg, Virginia, but they're anxious to, from what we hear, to move out there. We actually sent Josh, representative from Dublin City Schools, three weeks ago to attend that event in Williamsburg. And there's a lot of things we offer that that destination does not. So, we're excited about our chances to land that event here in the next couple of weeks. With assistance of the city, the Australian Rules Football 49th Parallel Cup was held August 4th at Dari Fields. If you remember, that was the competition that paid the U.S. national teams versus the Canadian national teams, four separate games, a day-long event. It attracted players, fans from across the United States and Canada, filled close to two of our hotels as well that weekend. They were very excited, very receptive of the area. I know they spent a lot of money at the Irish Festival on Saturday night and Sunday as well, which we like to see. And again, that's kind of a precursor to the Australian Rules Football National Championship that's coming here to Dublin in the next few years as well. Also, last month, we worked with Dan Sullivan and Memorial Tournament to secure the Pure Silk Women's Collegiate Golf Championship that was held at Wedgewood in early August. That then attracted 200 of the top college players from 40 universities across the United States. Again, all those folks stayed at a Dublin hotel during their stay. We continue to work hard this summer on several packages to get, attract people from the leisure market. Our summer campaign with AZU and COSI continues to do well. We even created a package this past summer, or this past Irish Festival, for Sunday night only to try to incur people because that's a great time of need for our hotels. We really don't need nights for Friday and Saturdays, so we tried to incent people to come for Sunday night and enjoy the festival on Sunday. And we're working closely with Memorial Tournament on doing a package with them as well. A couple items of note to kind of finish up. We are doing organizational assessment and destination assessment project, research project. We've retained a national firm to come in next month. They will be interviewing all, people from all across the Dublin Tours Ministry, a lot of you folks as well. It's really going to help us kind of set us straight, set us a right course in the future. It's going to review what kind of markets will work in the future, what won't, really help us kind of make sure that we're in the right direction as well. And it's really a proactive measure that our board's taking to make sure we continue to do what we're doing the best we can. The Residence Inn has been sold. If you have not heard, they are now the Sinesta Extended State Dublin. We met with those folks last week. They're one of the few, they've just been really the Ohio market as well. They're typically a southern-type property. They're very excited to be entrenched within the Dublin community, which we're always excited to hear. So, that's good news. And finally, we're looking forward to the President's Cup Town Hall meeting tomorrow morning, and all of you smartly initiated. I think we have 80, 70, 80 people coming to that, and we're anxious to take part of that. And again, thank you for all your leadership, for not only the Town Hall meeting, but the, all your efforts for the President's Cup. You know, we see it as a great opportunity. We're excited to showcase the city of Dublin to the rest of the world here next year.
Great. Any questions, comments for Scott?
Scott, I just want to say that I ran into one of the owners of our, one of our larger hotels, and he told me that you guys are doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
This huge amount of support from the city. You just can't believe it, and the convention of your business.
Fantastic. Thank you. Always good to hear.
It's really great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
I'm also impressed with the amount of work and direction that you've given with the number of staff that you have. It's terrific. And anything that we can do to continue to reinforce the work you're doing, you know, be sure to let us know.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Moving on to that portion of our agenda for citizens' comments regarding matters not on the agenda, Mr. Maurer.
Your Honor, I have, I have two questions relative to some procedural matters. And they relate to the development which happened during my hiatus, if that's the right word, namely the consensual agenda. If a citizen, and by the way, I don't have any issues tonight with that, if a citizen has an issue, issues or testimony relative to any of the items on the consensual agenda, how does he or she proceed? I repeat, I don't have any tonight. How does he or she proceed? I see here that a council member can bring up an issue. Now, I know if there's a connection there between the citizen and the council member.
Did you say a council member cannot?
Can.
Yes, right, correct.
Yeah.
Correct. You care to comment, Marshall?
Well, a couple of things, just to let you know, since we started, I believe it was last August with the consent agenda, we have, we take a close look at what we put on the consent agenda. And any ordinances that are on, the first reading is on the consent agenda. The second reading and adoption is then scheduled for the regular public hearing, so there's the opportunity at the second reading. And for the resolutions that we put on the consent agenda are those that are normal operational types of legislation that have either been discussed and included in our operating budget or the capital budget, like some of the items that you'll see this evening. And if at any time you have questions of items that are on the agenda ahead of time, you know, you're welcome to call us at staff to get any of your concerns or questions addressed prior to the meeting.
Okay. All right, good. And you answered my second question, which is, I noticed that the, at the preceding consensual agenda, there was an item which said there'll be a hearing on this at the next meeting. So, that means that that particular item is brought up to the level of regular items.
That's correct.
Yeah, well, that answers my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maurer. Speaking of which, moving on to our consent agenda, does any council member wish to remove any of the seven items listed on this evening's consent agenda? If that's the case, then I would move that we approve the actions requested for the seven items listed on the consent agenda. If there's a second.
Second.
And if you call for the vote, please.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Genesi Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes. Great, thank you. Moving on then to the second, for the second reading of ordinances, we have just, we have a couple this evening, the first one being ordinance 47-12.
Accepting the annexation of 3.4 plus or minus acres, more or less, from Washington Township to the city of Dublin.
Thank you. Mr. Gunnarman.
Thank you. This is an annexation for 3.4 acres, represented by David Hoy on behalf of Alexander and Hari Vesha. The property is located along and includes a section of Dublin Road indicated on this map by the area in red. You can see it is one long parcel that runs from Dublin Road back to the river. You may recall that we approved two resolutions regarding this back in April. Those are required indications that we can provide services to this property. And following that, the county did take up this matter and approved this annexation on May 1st. Since then, we have had the first reading at our last council meeting. You may have noticed in your packet, there was some information regarding some concerns that the adjacent property owners have had. I presume some of them will want to speak this evening, but generally speaking, they involve the setback distances. This would be the annexed property where a potential house could be built. This is the existing house to the north of it, still in unincorporated area. And much of the concern is the distances there would be between structures here. In the city code, that distance could be reduced to as little as eight feet from the property line, whereas in the current township code, they would need a total separation between buildings, regardless of where the property line was, of potentially 50 feet. So, that's been the primary issue that residents have raised with us. As you may have noticed in the memo, the legal staff and planning staff tried to facilitate a meeting with the annexed property and the adjacent property owners to see if they could work out something. I think they probably have some understanding of ways that might be resolved. But they do have other issues besides the zoning issues that they have to resolve as well. And so, they probably have more issues than we are in position to deal with outside of the zoning. Other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
My only comment, and I didn't distribute it to everybody, is that tonight you have, you cannot put conditions on an annexation. You accept it as filed or reject it. The date for, if you must do that finally, is about another 45 or 60 days out, but you could act on it tonight. It's set for second reading. And in terms of the zoning districts, we have a statute that puts that into the class of rural, which is our largest setback. So, there is no place else, I mean, that's just how we've always done it. We reviewed all that a few years ago, so it's, and if you don't act on it at any time, it is deemed rejected. So, you have to accept it tonight or in a future meeting, which you have, I think, maybe two more meetings. But it's, it's ready to go tonight, and the legal staff thinks it meets all the requirements. Thank you.
Mr. Gunnarman.
Just to be sure we understood, what we have in our current zoning code is an automatic starting zoning of our rural. And as it happens, as Steve said, that is basically the biggest setbacks that we have in any of our stray districts in any event.
And one thing that just jumps out at me, I'm sure there'll be other questions, and some concerned individuals are going to speak to us in just a minute, but the driveway, the access here.
There is, I know, a written document that exists that details how driveways may be and can be reestablished. From our standpoint, it is a good understanding in that it limits the access to Dublin Road to that existing driveway point. Past there, you see the driveway extending back along the property line and serving this house up here. They will have to reorganize that. That's one of the issues I was referring to. That is, they'll have to come to a new understanding of where the driveway connection will be to get from this property over to the Dublin Road location. So, this will, I assume, in some respects, be relocated, but that's not a zoning issue or one that we are in position to influence.
So, do I understand you correctly so that there's no option for more than one driveway?
No, I don't believe so.
In this location?
As it happens, I believe the terrain would not be something you'd want to deal with in any event.
Interesting.
I'm sorry, but I need clarification on where the houses that you, which property owner is that?
That's the Carpenter property.
That's what I thought. So, it's the vacant lot that is the Vesha lot?
That's right. The vacant property is the one that's being annexed.
And so, the only thing that is there now, you say, is this driveway?
Uh, yes.
And that is used?
Yes.
By the Carpenter household?
That's correct.
Okay. And that was through this written agreement that you're referring to?
I believe so.
Was there a house there before that was a tear down, or?
I don't know. I don't know if there ever was one or not.
Was this split at some point?
Yeah, there was a split of what was originally a larger piece of property.
What's the setback from, from the river on this property, by the way, in case you want to stagger the house?
I would say minimum 150 feet.
And the flood plain could even define that, too.
Which takes you to sort of the back of where?
Someplace.
In there?
Here, I would presume. Yeah, be the same over here.
And it was requested to be annexed for what reason?
I presume potentially this flexibility in building site may be of been one reason. Sewer and water, I think, would probably be primary. Sewer runs across this property and water is very accessible.
And it's kind of been our policy to try and bring as much of this unincorporated land into the fold, as it were.
That is one policy, and the other one is if you want sewer and water, you do need to annex.
Well, I suppose as one might expect, we have some people who would like to speak to this matter this evening. I don't know if it makes a difference, the order in which people are signed up, but Scott Burr, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening. My name is Scott Beer, and next to me is Sean and Jennifer Carpenter. I am counsel for them. They are the objecting owners to the annexation. Essentially, we are objecting to the annexation because the unintended consequence of bringing the Vesha lot into the city of Dublin and the change of zoning that comes along with that would allow for the Vesha lot to be developed with only an eight-foot side yard setback, where currently Washington Township code requires at minimum a 50-foot structural separation. The Carpenter house, which was constructed in 1925, is only about 10 feet from the lot line, so there is a very real possibility that these houses may ultimately be separated by a mere 18 feet. It is also important to appreciate that the front of the Carpenter house is actually facing into the Vesha lot. Now, we appreciate that there are other political considerations regarding this annexation, the desire to bring Dublin Road into the city of Dublin, uniformed police and EMS servicing, and the desire to eliminate a Washington Township island. However, I would suggest that these considerations have existed for some time, that notwithstanding such, the status quo without the annexation seems to be working. Dublin Road is adequately maintained through an agreement with Washington Township. Police and EMS services are available to these properties, and if anything, annexing the lot, the Vesha lot, will create an even more complicated island. Further, it's interesting to note that the annexation of the Vesha lot will not create any new tax revenue for the city of Dublin. So, with this said, the benefit of the annexation does not appear, or the benefits of the annexation appear to outweigh the inequitable and disproportionate adverse impact on this single family, the Carpenters, while only benefiting the Vesha lot. The denial of the annexation, however, will not preclude the Veshas from realizing the use of their property. They merely will be required to develop the lot in conformance with the requirements which were in place and which they were aware of when they purchased the lot. Now, in an effort to reach a compromise, the Carpenters have proposed a 15-foot side yard setback, creating a 35-foot structural separation. However, this proposal has been rejected. We therefore can only conclude that the intention is then to develop the Vesha lot in conformance with the eight-foot side yard setback and ask that the annexation be denied for this reason. Now, in the alternative, I note that Section 709.023(c) of the Ohio Revised Code states that where uses are incompatible, council will require in the zoning ordinance permitting the incompatible uses, the owner of the annexed territory to provide a buffer separating the use of the annexed territory and the adjacent land remaining within the township. I suggest that having two residential structures no more than 18 feet apart is an incompatible use, and that this council has the authority to require that the annexed lot be developed with an adequate buffer separating the two homes. Thank you. I can take any questions.
You said the Carpenter house, does it violate the current setback? You say it has a, what's the setback from the edge of the Carpenter house?
There is no sideline, side yard setback required in Washington Township. It's a 50-foot structural separation. The house was built in 1925, and the parcel, now the Vesha parcel has been vacant since the initial breakup of Sider Shores, the development of Sider Shores. So, there has never been a setback issue because there's never been another structure on the property, which actually creates an interesting conundrum, because if in fact we were to annex the Dublin property, the Vesha lot into Dublin, it would create a legal nonconforming use on the part of the Carpenters. So, God forbid, should there be a casualty, it would be the Carpenters who would have to go back and either get an, you know, a BZA, a BZA change, or would physically have to move their property, because again, the Carpenter, the Vesha house would be in conformance, and they no longer will be in conformance with the structure, with the Vesha structure going on that lot.
So, the, Mr. Smith, the Carpenter property is in the township, is that correct?
That's correct, and will remain in township.
And the Vesha property is what's being requested, okay? And if there's never been, okay, I guess a little bit of confusion I have is when they bought the house, okay, so the lot was empty.
The lot was empty.
But there's no reason to believe a lot is going to be emptied forever and ever and ever.
Absolutely, but at the time that they purchased the lot, again, the lot, the Vesha lot was in Washington Township, and they were willing to accept the fact that a structure could be built within 50 feet of their structure, not within eight feet of the lot line, creating only an 18-foot setback.
And where would 50 feet be of their structure, Gary?
Oh, take a guess.
In fact, I can answer that because we did do some measurements on the property, if that'll help. From the edge of the garage, which is the far-left arrow, thank you, basically 50 feet almost follows that arrow, and the house would start just a little bit in front of that arrow and go forward towards Dublin Road. So, that's about where 50, a 50-foot separation would put the Vesha house.
And where are you saying the code would put it for Dublin?
Essentially, you could put it right here, square with the other house, as close as eight feet. We require a combined 25-foot side yard. Eight feet would be the minimum on one side. The balance could be on the other.
But could it go in the front? I mean, is there some issue with which direction the house is, front or back of the arrow?
No, absolutely not. No. We're really only requesting that the 50-foot structural setback be on.
Yeah, but you know, if it goes to the back, it would be in the flood plain, right?
It would be in the flood plain.
So, the choice is either side by side or forward.
Or forward.
And is that a lake forward on a?
I'm sorry?
Is that a lake that we're seeing there, or pond?
No, that's a shadow.
It's a shadow.
It's a tree shadow.
Okay.
Mr. Vesha, if, I'm sorry, John, I don't mean to.
No, go ahead.
If I understand your, or if I follow your logic, your argument is that if somebody bought a property in Washington Township, surrounded by Washington Township property, they have a reasonable expectation that that property around them will never be annexed to the city of Dublin?
No, I'm not saying that one bit. I'm merely saying that, that the circumstances of this annexation and the adverse impact on one single family outweigh the annexation in of itself. And that because it's going to create this very unique and very small separation between the structures, it's a reason to consider not doing the annexation.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Sure, please.
So, somebody help me out here. Did parcel, Mr. Burr, I'm sorry, I believe all of us do this, Mr. Vesha.
It's fine.
I apologize. So, this parcel that the Veshas, I guess presently own, and wish to annex into the city of Dublin, how long has this parcel existed?
Since 1925, when Sider Shores was created.
This undeveloped parcel has existed since 1925?
When Sider Shores was created, correct.
When was it split?
Uh, we don't know the history of that. And split is an interesting term, because if you look at the original subdivision map for Sider Shores, it's two separate, it is, and it's always been designated as two separate lots, lots four and lot five. So, I, as opposed to a split, I think in fact the Orms family owned both lots, and when they sold off one lot, they reserved the easement over what is now the Vesha lot. So, it's technically not a split. It was a reservation of an easement after lots four and five were created with a 1925 subdivision plot.
Gary, those are the minimum setbacks. Is there, I mean, that's not saying there's a piece of property that it's already platted or anything. Is there plans for a house to go up there now?
They would be in a position to come in and apply for a building permit immediately.
Sure, but, but it's not like they're going to build that. I mean, that's kind of speculative.
Yeah, that's true.
Just because you're allowed that doesn't mean you're going to push it to the edge.
Certainly.
I was going to say, it would be to the advantage of the property, or whoever's going to build that house, to have a bit of a separation.
Absolutely.
Just as the, just as the Carpenters wouldn't want to be looking into someone else's house, if someone's going to build that house.
And if I can address that, in fact, we have approached the Veshas on a number of occasions for some kind of plot plan, something to show us. Before we even filed the annexation objection, we asked, just show us where you want to put the house, because it may well be that it's acceptable. We were never able to get that. We don't know where the house is going to go up to this day. And in fact, what we did receive were elevations. The Vesha house can be developed in such a way that it would be oriented with the back of the house towards the front of the Carpenter house. So, in fact, the Veshas would never know or need to look into the kitchen of the Carpenters because of the way they will have the ability to orient their house on the lot. So, again, without knowing what they want to do, as I've said, the only assumption we can make is that they're going to push right to the line.
Mr. Smith, let me ask you, I didn't understand the discussion about nonconforming. That didn't resonate.
First of all, yeah, first of all, if the, if you annex this property and the Veshas build on it, our resident, who's now in Dublin, is conforming. on it, our resident, who's now in Dublin, is conforming, they may or may not be nonconforming in Washington Township, that I don't know about township rules, but, you know, I do know that they built the house 10 foot from the lot line that they knew was there, and we've been, we've been working on this for months, and so our folks are, our folks, the people annexing, not our folks, the folks seeking annexation, are saying, well, it could be eight feet. Well, yes, it could be, because it meets our code.
Right.
And I don't believe it creates, first of all, for the annexed property, it creates no nonconforming, and for the Washington Township property, if council has, you know, an issue that's nonconforming, I guess he can deal with it with Washington Township. I mean, you know more about Washington Township than anybody sitting up there, but it does not create a nonconforming issue for the city of Dublin.
The nonconforming is created in Washington Township, because if the Vesha House is built eight feet from the property line, and there is only an 18-foot structural separation, the Carpenter House is now in violation of the Washington Township 50-foot structural separation. So imagine the Carpenter House, God forbid, suffers a casualty.
It just becomes nonconforming.
Counsel, I...
I don't buy that.
Excuse me.
They will not, they will have to rebuild the house in the event of a casualty in conformance with Washington Township Code. Washington Township provides for a 50-foot structural setback.
Excuse me, I'm not a township lawyer, but I can tell you that we do have a thing in our Ohio law called pre-existing nonconforming uses.
Exactly.
And whether Washington Township would ever require them to do anything, whether that's the law, I don't think is, I don't want to say it's not pertinent, it's pertinent to your client's obviously argument, but I just don't agree with your logic.
Well, it is a fear nonetheless, that the house would have to be moved.
You made another comment about no tax revenue, and if there is a house there, even though it might be a relatively small number, there'd potentially be income tax revenue for the owner that lives there, there could potentially be millage for schools and fire and...
Well, any structure built, there would be the property tax issue, and as far as income taxes, it would depend on where the individual works.
To say there's no tax revenue would be...
I didn't mean to say there was no tax revenue, the tax revenue is already being collected from this lot. Now granted, there will be an increase with additional...
There'd be a lot more additional, potentially.
Tim, can I...
Please.
Okay, Rick.
Steve. You mentioned at the beginning that, if I understand this correctly, that with an annexation, we are not permitted to place conditions on that, we either vote it up or vote it down, or we decide not to vote, and it'll lapse over a couple meetings.
Yes.
In that vein, what criteria do we look at to determine whether or not to accept an annexation?
Well, first, if we...
More specifically, is this discussion germane to that criteria?
Well, I personally think that, I guess it's germane for their clients, but in terms of the legality of it, when this was first brought to us, our police chief was here, and the planners, and the fire department, whose this happens to be the same, and everybody else came in, and we provided statements of services pursuant to Ohio Revised Code. I don't, one comment that was made was that he is pointing out, council's pointing out that this would be an incompatible use, and I think Gary has a comment about that, because these are both residential properties. This isn't like we're building a commercial property, so I don't think... Gary, you can...
I don't, I don't think there's a precedent for that in terms of state law, but it's certainly not a precedent I think we would want to have in place. If two single-family homes can't be considered compatible, you're going to have to stretch awful far from some that are.
It's not like we're putting a proposed foundry or some kind of zoning that would be...
Those are the types of things that we expect to be incompatible.
Right.
True.
If I could say, that I believe there is a public interest in not having residential homes so close to each other, and when I, when I discuss the fact that, you know, through the code, that we're looking at a potential incompatible use, I am merely creating an avenue for the council to potentially, instead of an up-and-down vote, to find a way to be able to create the buffer that is provided in the statutory code. I'm not saying the argument is completely with precedent, but I'm saying it is an argument that can be made, that if you find that the two houses being so close together is incompatible, a buffer can be required by the council as opposed to an up-and-down vote.
If there are not any more questions, sir, do your clients wish to speak? They're signed up, but they don't have to?
I just had them sign up, just in case they had to answer any questions directly from you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Mr. Vesha, if we could, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Vesha, if you'd like to come forward, please.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Sure.
My name is Nicholas Vesha, I'm an attorney, I represent the landowners of the property subject to annexation, Harvey and Alexander Vesha. However, I'll really focus more on Alex and his wife, Virginia, they're the ones who will actually be living there, and they've been involved with the negotiations. Really, that's kind of what has been a frustrating process, is the negotiation, in terms of the legality of the issue, I don't think there's any issue there. I know, speaking with Ms. Reeler, and as, you know, Mr. Smith has pointed out, that the code, everything in the ORC has been met, in terms of the reasons to bring it into annexation, there's really no legal basis for the Carpenters to object, just as there's no legal right to my clients to be annexed in. But it's not a legal issue at this point, it's a private landowner issue, you know, whether, how close the house is going to be, and what the setback will be, where the driveway is, these are all, you know, issues that we're trying to negotiate, I believe we're continuing to negotiate. Mr. Burr is correct, that the last round of negotiations were rejected, but there's a lot to that story, and I don't know how much detail you guys want, but, so, but again, I just want to highlight that, and the idea of the public interest, homes not being that close together, I mean, I believe the Dublin Code has already legislated this, and if, you know, I don't know if that's to say that the Dublin Code is against public interest, I'm not really sure what that argument was, because if it's a rural designation, presumably that that's okay. But anyway, it's not really, I'll get away from the legal issues, but in terms of the factual distance, I know Mr. Burr mentioned that the house was 10 feet away from the property, that's actually incorrect, the garage is 19 feet, and the rest of the house is actually further away. But anyway, those, again, those are factual issues, private landowners can certainly try to negotiate, unless it has to end up in, you know, litigation, which we all hope to avoid. We're continuing to try to negotiate, we know there's really, the issue of the driveway still remains, and that's something that, I should point out that, I know, I don't know if you understand the timeline, but the lot, my client's lot, was actually purchased two years prior to the Carpenters purchasing their house, and my clients had attempted to, through the Realtor, to meet with them prior to their closing, prior to the purchase, that meeting never happened, I don't know if the Realtor never gave that information away, and then before, it actually, as it was listed for sale, the Carpenters' property I'm talking about, my clients erected like an orange mesh fence along the property line, just to show any potential buyer that, hey, we own this property, this is how close it is to your, to your house, and we, you know, I think the only reasonable inference to make is that we do intend to build. And they did reach out and try to meet with any potential buyer, fortunately, it didn't happen. I know I only have a couple minutes left, so I'll take any questions. If you want more specific facts in terms of the actual negotiation process between the parties, I'm happy to give that, okay?
Just for the sake of good neighborliness, the 15-foot setback, is the Vesha House going to be so large that it's going to require the additional footage?
Well, that's kind of the...
What's the situation there?
The difficulty, I think, in this whole negotiation process is, we're really not that far along. I know, I know my brother and his wife came across the Kevin Knight company, the Kevin Knight House that they saw at the parade of homes in Tartan Fields a few years ago, that's the house, I mean, those are the drawings that we have. It's, we wanted to wait until the annexation process to see, how does it have to be redesigned? Are we going to have to go to Washington Township, and what kind of variance can we get from Washington Township, and all that stuff? So, in terms of the size, I mean, I honestly don't know how it's going to be built, because we're not there yet. I mean, it's, there's no need for it to be eight feet from the property, I don't think, I don't, but I don't know the floodplains, we haven't done any of that research yet. I mean, again, it's waiting until this process is done, because it's really premature to, you know, to spend a lot of money on this issue if it's not even going to get annexed in, it's kind of, what's the point? So I'm sorry, I can't really answer your question, because I just don't, they haven't done that analysis yet.
Other questions? Sure seems to me like it's in Carpenters' interest to work it out, because you've got a driveway there, and I've been through a few of these in the township over the years, and those can be really, really difficult issues, maintenance, I mean, on and on, access, privacy.
And we already, as Mr. Gunnerman will attest to, that we were wondering if it could be another curb cut, which of course that was rejected, but, you know, my clients aren't, I mean, they understand the rules of easements, and, you know, having to replace it before anything is destructive with the, from the first one, but that's all private negotiations.
You know, because I'm not going to be able to sleep tonight until, understanding this driveway issue, in other words, I mean, at the end of the day, and I know this isn't, you know, a requirement, you know, or necessarily a consideration, but it's going to have to be a shared driveway, am I correct?
Oh, right, yeah, I think the idea was, and the most recent proposal was closer to what my clients are agreeable, was to have, I don't have a laser, but, you know, I don't, yeah, maybe, maybe right there, maybe exactly, maybe have a...
Gotcha.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Something like that. But yes, yeah, of course it would be shared, let's not in doubt, dispute.
Did you have anything else? Anyone? Anything else to offer? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, if there's no other comment or suggestions, I'm going to call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Foring.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zirker.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Ordinance 49-12.
Amending annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2012.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, members of council. We are bringing forward this evening an ordinance to amend the 2012 appropriations, as outlined in your staff memo dated August 2nd. The additional appropriations are outlined in that memo, with $14,200 being requested to go into the general fund. Those expenses that will be covered by that supplemental appropriation really focus around two refunds, one of those being an estate tax refund, and the other related to a refund pertaining to Oak Park Dublin. You will also notice in the memo that there is a refund component of that Oak Park Dublin in the water fund and sewer fund as well. We are additionally requesting $80,000 out of the hotel motel tax fund in order to accomplish some improvements at the Dublin Arts Council Building that had been previously approved by council. In addition, a $307,050 appropriation amendment into the COIC fund for costs related to the Roshansky settlement, and then finally, within our water and sewer funds, an amount to cover the water refund to Oak Park Dublin, and then in the sewer fund, again, costs related to the Oak Park Dublin refund, as well as costs related to the Dumfries Court improvements.
Questions? Angel, could I ask you, the section four, the Oak Park?
Yes.
Could you explain that to me, please?
It's my understanding that the permits that were filed have expired, and as such, we have to refund the money related to that.
Oh, so they pay upfront?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, and what's the number on that?
For just section four?
Yes.
That's in the water fund, and that amount is $23,000.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If you're not in here, if you call for the vote, I'm sorry, Mr. Mauer, you wanted to speak to this matter?
I may not have any questions, because no questions came up. I was looking at the section for the improvement of the Dublin Arts Council Building, and I hear nobody's opposed to that. If there were, that I would speak up for it, it's one of the shining jewels of the city.
Actually, Mr. Mauer, it's been discussed at council before, it's been discussed at council before, you know, in this particular instance, I'm assuming, I'm recalling the first reading, and so council has had reaction to this, and I think is supportive.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And if you call for the vote, please.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zirker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Foring.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 48-12.
Authorizing the city of Dublin to participate in an application for a local government innovation fund grant through the state of Ohio to conduct a feasibility study of information technology services and infrastructure consolidation.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Ms. Krenel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the last of three local government innovation fund grant requests that the staff plans to bring forward to council, and this proposal is for a feasibility study among several central Ohio communities to explore consolidation or shared services of information technology services. Similar to the other proposals brought forward, this will be a request for $100,000, there's a 10% match, and once again, we assume that that 10% match would be met with staff services related to this grant proposal. I can answer any specific questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
I can recall, so this region is going to submit three grants, or are there more that we're just not party to?
That's a good question. I know of these three, there may be another one or two out there, but...
And is this a, I'm trying to get the likelihood of success of getting the grant awards, is this pretty common numbers from the different districts throughout Ohio, or...
I don't know the concentration, and I'm not really sure the last round of granting where the distribution was as well. We've looked at all three of the ones that we brought forward, and we think that there's a fairly high likelihood of success, or I think we would have maybe not entered into the partnership.
Right. Thank you.
Anyone else? And if you call for the vote, please.
Ms. Tennessee Zirker.
Yes.
Mrs. Foring.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 49-12.
Waiving competitive bidding requirements pursuant to Section 8.04 Contracting Procedures, Paragraph C, waiver of competitive bidding of the revised charter for the purchase of diesel fuel and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Central Ohio Farmers Co-op.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Ms. Krenel.
Yes, this resolution is for contract renewal for continued purchase of high-performance clean diesel. As council may recall, in 2011, we entered into a testing agreement with EcoChem Alternative Fuels, who is the developer of this fuel, along with our distributor, Dublin City Schools in Washington Township to test this fuel. We did a controlled study with 12 school buses, using the traditional ultra-low sulfur diesel as a baseline, and comparing that to this new high-performance clean diesel. Over a course of three months, we tested both of these fuels, the study is attached, but just to highlight the results, the average fuel efficiency increase was 16.1%, and emissions reductions were 12% for hydrocarbons and 13% for NOx. Understanding the results of this study and the continued use availability of this fuel, we would like to continue with our purchase of this.
Questions, comments? What's the value of something like this in the course of a year? I know you've got the cost per gallon here, but what's that, Hill Ballpark, are you spending a hundred thousand or 200,000 or...
We spend total 1.8 million on fuel, I can't remember the breakdown between diesel and gasoline, but it's over a million dollars a year we spend on diesel now. 75% of that is used by the schools, 15% by Washington Township, and 10% by the city, so I would...
Yeah, we don't have much diesel.
I could get you those numbers on what the potential cost is.
So for us, it's kind of a pass-through, really, to the other jurisdictions?
It really is, it doesn't impact us.
That's all I need, thanks. Anyone else? And if you call for the vote, please.
Ms. Tennessee Zirker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mrs. Foring.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
I think that wraps it up, except for staff comments.
I have nothing further.